All right, I think we'll go ahead and start the October night 2019 work session. Mr. Prodic is on his way. He called and said that he would be a few minutes late. But we're gonna go ahead and start with the second review of policy 7100, Recruitment and Selection of Personnel. Superintendent Stefani.
Thank you, Chair Mathridge. Board members, you got this policy last month, and I know it's several pages, but there's just one paragraph that's in addition in there, and I believe it's, yes, it's in there. It's about four or five pages back. And there's one option in there for the extra information approach to the board, whether or not you wanted to, the extra information to accompany every recommendation for every type of hire that we have, or if you wanted it to be more in the administrative realm. What we talked about the last time is that, you know, if we did it for every, every hire, especially over the summer, our HR office would really be hopping trying to get all the documentation together.
I don't think it was for every hire.
I think it's for administration.
I think it was for administration, yeah. That's what I thought it was.
I think administration's good, but I also wonder about some jobs that may not be classified as administrative, like Ms. Hodge's job. You know, those jobs, are they classified as administrative?
No, but you, we could say administration in district-level positions, you could do that.
I'd be okay with that.
Supervisors, coordinators.
I think that would be good.
I'd die.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just going to do, you know, say, 11-month employees or 12-month employees, would that cover?
Not all of them.
No, it wouldn't cover all of them.
It would cover all of them. But those positions.
Cover a lot of them, but I don't think it would cover all of them.
But traditionally, those positions.
Yeah, if, I mean, if you're talking not having to do this for, like, teaching positions, teacher assistants, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, and those types of things, because you're talking hundreds and hundreds and files, you know, that we'd be presenting. And I, sometimes Ann gets haircuts that makes it a little spiky, but it would be like a lot of the time, the hair would be up, it would be up on end all the time.
No, I think it should just get that to Mr. Prodic.
Indirectly.
Yeah, you're right. That, that, okay. So that would be, in that bracket, that would be the, the second one that says, school or central office administrator, and then we can add to that and say, district-level personnel or something like that, and that would cover what you're looking for?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Are we voting on that tonight?
Yes, with, with that being the choice, then that would be the post that you voted on.
Okay.
Are we allowed to discuss all that during closed session?
Yeah, you have to. That, that, that's the information that gets presented to you in closed session, and then the personnel reports you vote on during the consent agenda in the open session, but you can't talk about any of that background information in open session. Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay. All right, Dr. Matt Luce, math update?
About this time last year, Kristi and I presented our, our plan for math, and how we were gonna support math with our new standards rolling out, and what that was gonna look like. So I said, I think it's about time that we give an update and show what's going on in math, and also update you on where we're at with our English Language Arts as the new standards are implemented there, and a new test rolls out as well. So, yeah.
You need some lights off?
Yeah, that's good.
All right. So last year, we talked, we, we put in our instructional frameworks for grades K-5. We, we had a math leadership team, I think I shared that out before. We had district-wide training, so all of our PD days last year, we had heavy emphasis on math. We created a district resource document behind the scenes, so teachers could go and say, okay, here's lessons, here's resources that we can use to teach math. And we've had almost 30 people involved in that process, and we continue to work that process. We have cluster assessments that we created locally at the end of each of the units in the K-5 arena. And we had opened up math resources for grades 6, 8, and then in June, we had a math academy. And that was a, we had, what, we had 340? I think we had about 40 people, 40 to 45 people came, and we had teachers from across the region come to our district and receive training, and they actually paid to come to see us. So that was our first endeavor into that. We had some speakers come in from Pitt County to help with that, and to add and supplement our work. So year two, that's where we're at right now, we're gonna, we're, we're building upon everything that we put in place, these frameworks. We are, our, our K-5 teachers are gonna be receiving Chromebooks in very near future. They have not had that in the past. We were able to take some state funding that we got and use that money to purchase Chromebooks for our teachers. That's something that we sorely needed. I'm gonna commend Sandy Reynolds on her work in getting those ordered and in place, and also having inventory on hand. She spent a lot of time this past summer identifying everything we had in the district, and get, and having accurate information so we can make decisions. We purchased iReady workbooks in grades 3, 5, and we lined that up under the district resource document. So the team, so they're not starting on page one and going through 212 pages. They're saying, page four aligns here, here's a great resource, and they can plug that in. And so all of our 3, 5 teachers have those. We purchased DreamBox, which is a computer-based program. It's a supplemental program. It is not a curriculum. It's standards-aligned, and it will meet our kids where they are at. What I mean by that is when a kid takes the test, the software intuitively pushes them to, if they're already strong, it's gonna take them further. If they need to have supplemental resources to fill in some gaps, then that software's supposed to go and take towards the other direction. So it's supposed to move with our kids, and it's about a 15-minute test kids can take in small group settings. Instructional coach, we just hired Diane Davenport. We lost one of our instructional coaches from last year. We continue to have a need to beef up our, our middle school math and our high school math. Diane is a great fit for that, and she is gonna be working extensively in grades 6 through 8. We had open-up training come in. We purchased the product four years ago, but we did not provide our teachers with professional development on how to use the product. So some of our teachers were comfortable, others not so much. They came in on August 14th and 15th. We looked, and I'm gonna, you know, commend Mr. Stefani for this as well. I said, Mark, we can send four people to Atlanta for this cost. We can bring a trainer to our district for just a little bit more and get all of our math staff trained. And so we brought the trainer in, and they trained on the 14th, 15th of August with us. And we have common assessments that are working on in grades 6 through 8. When we say a common assessment, that same assessment that's given at Mayock Middle School will be given at Currituck Middle School, 6th grade math, 8th grade, 7th grade, and so on.
I know you're on, I know you're on a roll here, you got it all practiced in early, but I'm gonna interrupt for a second. If you look at the, the DreamBox up there, the board may have remembered a text that you received on professional development day. This is actually a compliment to DreamBox, a compliment to, to Dr. Luce, the consultant that DreamBox sent on that given day. She wasn't in the right mindset to be training on that day. And so, teachers and administrators have made contact with Dr. Luce, who made contact with me, and then we made contact with DreamBox, and we just shut down the training on that given day. But while Dr. Luce was talking to DreamBox, DreamBox is bringing back multiple consultants. We're gonna be able to provide training in every building, so that people don't have to travel to some central site to get their training. They can be in their building. And we're gonna end up getting probably two to three times the training sessions from DreamBox than we originally signed up for. And so they're making it right, even though we had to have a bumpy morning a couple of weeks ago. And I appreciate our staff members, they knew that we typically have better trainings than that, and so they didn't put the blame on Currituck County. They knew it was a company issue that had to be ironed out, and DreamBox came to play to do that.
Dr. Luce, I had written down that I wanted to commend you and Mr. Stefani for addressing it so quickly with staff development, where the presenter was obviously not, like you said, in the right frame of mind. I worked for Currituck County for 26 years, and I never, in all those 26 years, ever had, and I was, went through some bad training, I'm not saying I didn't, but it was never canceled. So I just wanna commend y'all for realizing that it was not something that our teachers needed to have to go through, and for taking care of it quickly, and contacting the company, and getting them on track with it. So, I already had it written down.
Commend you on it, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say also, I happened to visit the site that day, and I saw Dr. Luce, and he immediately told me what was going on, and said, you know, I, he was beside himself. He was very flustered about it, and said, you know, we're gonna take care of this. So I too would like to commend their system for helping.
Thanks. Our, our teachers, we've worked hard at creating good quality professional development, and I want it done well, and I want it done right, and staff should be treated with respect. And, and DreamBox is gonna make good on that. We mean, we're, every building is gonna have a trainer on site, including outside.
Yeah, that's great.
So, making sure that they connect and get them fair, and they'll be there. So.
I have two questions before you change the slide. So, DreamBox, their educational development service?
Yes.
Okay. And are the workbooks part of the program?
So, they're two different ones. iReady workbooks, and then we also have DreamBox. So we've provided two more supplements for our teachers.
Do the students have workbooks?
Yes.
Okay. Where do they use them?
In the classroom.
Okay. Because...I'm concerned still, not that those aren't good. My son comes home, and brings him a piece of paper, and it might have some terminology that they might have slightly changed since I did that. And I'm concerned that there's not something that tracks with the photocopy for homework, that the caregiver, grandparent, guardian, parent, big brother, et cetera, if they're not permitted with the terminology, or trying to help their child through homework. So, that's all. Just not saying all that's not in it, really. Still concerned that when we don't have information that goes home, other than the questions, it takes a part of that process, how if there's somebody there to assist. Not always, my house or his, a kid's house is there. Don't want it out there. Some of the terms they use are different.
They are different.
Number sentences. All these types of terms.
Mr. Prodic, they are different.
I know. And so when the parent didn't, wasn't an educator, didn't go to DreamBox's presentation, and doesn't have any information at the fingertips, makes it difficult for them to assist a child with that statement, and that educational process, not intentionally as a result. That's where I'm concerned.
Can I, can I just say something real quick, because it's a great point that you had, and I had a conversation with another parent yesterday, who was talking about not necessarily math. So I told her, and I talked to the teacher, DPI has great parent resources on their DPI website, so I forwarded her an email with links to, one, it's the standards, and then it has a condensed version, parent version of the standards, so it's not so encompassing. And then on top of that, with those links, it, it has resources for the parents to use at home, help supplement, help the kids with their math. They also have with language arts. So that's out there, and I did that for that parent, and if any parent needs it, it's there, and we can forward and get this information to them. So it's there, it's just a matter of.
I'm just saying, all parents need the information. I, I'm just saying, if you got it right there at your fingertips, and you don't have to Google, or DPI, or computer it, and this and that, you're probably more out to do it. The more steps you're putting between human nature difficulties, completing tasks. I, I, you know, I just don't understand why we don't have something with the information that goes home.
A book.
A book.
There it is.
Something. A workbook that's got some. I don't know. I get, I get a cell phone that comes with instructions on how to work it. I, I, I just don't understand that we have all this information, but the parents don't get any of it to assist with the education. And I'm not casting any direct blame, I'm just frustrated by it, not at you, at the evolving of the way that things are done. I think it's, I think we did aspire to do more. That's all.
If I could interject, many of our classrooms use Google Classroom, and a lot of that in teachers' notes, and the step-by-step PowerPoint is included in their Google Classroom. And for students who don't have the internet access fully at home, they can take screenshots at school, and are taught how to do that. I guess we can also start including a list of places where they can go directly, so they're not playing the Google search, like Khan Academy and.
Talking about somebody that's learning how to add and read in K through 5. And we gotta go to a Google Classroom as a parent to try to help them. I find that more steps than it should have to be. I don't know. I'm not saying that it's not the worst thing ever, but certainly not the best thing.
Couple of things. Textbook funding was cut several years back. Has it been reinsta, you know, brought back up to par yet from the state?
I don't know about a comparison between the years, but they've kind of, they've kind of merged definitions, and they say textbooks or other instructional materials, and all of that's together. I think the first year I got here was when they cut it, and now that it's back together and they merged it, I'd have to go back and see what it used to be as textbook-only, and what instructional resources were only before they merged them together.
I, I just remember as grown up, and there will be examples. There will be an example. Didn't understand what you were doing, you reverted example. And then the parent could say, hey, hey, here's what we're doing, and could get on point. Now, what a parent's doing, everything else they gotta do, is to, you know, what they've got to now is get on the computer. A lot of kids over there, probably on their cell phones, computer now, whatever they're doing. And time's a-wastin' with that evening, while you're trying to get the rest of the things done that you have to get done in order to get started the next day. That's all I was saying.
Am I correct in the fact that, I mean, I was, Janet was there too, when we went through those textbooks?
Yeah.
Five at a time, every five years, and purchased new textbooks. Am I correct that I remember hearing that now they really do more online textbooks than they do the actual big hundred-dollar-a-student copy?
Yeah.
But that's not what it is, a hundred dollars.
Well, we got two workbooks in San, right? K through 5, is that what you're telling me?
3, 5. iReady workbooks.
Okay, excuse me. 3, 5, and?
And 6, 5.
And they say it's cool.
And open up.
But, so do we get the information? Do we photocopy out of that and then send it home? I mean, I.
They're consumable materials that were purchased for use in the classroom this year, so they could potentially go home.
I got you.
They could potentially be going home. We're not necessarily saying what, we, we use those as a supplement.
Yeah.
To go with.
And here's the deal, if the kid takes it home, and then the next day the teacher's ready to go on with the next thing, and the workbook is not here, it's at home.
I like the idea of the resources, though. I think if we shared that with the public, with the parents, and letting them know that the resources are available, and just those sites that they can go on.
And we can even make them hot links.
That'd be great. I think that would be great, because then the student and the parents can sit there together and go over it, and just reinforce their learning.
I personally would rather see there not be math homework right now, and use reading and homework and other homeworks, rather than math, until the kids really get the feel for what they're doing, because.
How are they gonna get good at it if they're on practice, like anything else, repetition, doing it over and over again?
Well, the problem with that, with math, is if, you know, while your child may have you to work with, and not all children have the way to sit there.
Just like some people don't have, people work with them for all kinds of things, sports.
Well, we don't want them to learn it the wrong way at home, but I do think that, you know, in what you were saying about having an example, that is helpful, that is helpful for me. And I dare say that any teacher in Currituck, I think if a parent went to them and said, I like online resources, can you send me something, that they would send some examples. You know, I mean, I know I would've, you know, I would've provided. But I know it's a, it's a cost thing, if we're sending photocopies. I know that costs a lot of money. I have to mention the time for the teacher to do it, so I, I don't know. I, I do like having examples. I can't help my Abby with her math. I cannot do it. So, but we do go online. I don't mind going online, but I guess, you know, some people may not have internet, they may not like going online, so, but I, I guess we'll have to rely on our teachers to help in whatever way they're asked.
Well, basically, the way to set up is, you're totally relying on the teacher. Because if the teacher doesn't get it right, not to say that they wouldn't, or intentionally, or any of that. But your, the way the system's set up is, if the teacher doesn't get it right, your fear of them practicing and getting it wrong somewhere else, doesn't matter.
Or not even having any help at home.
Right. And so what I'm saying, some help's better than no help.
So, Mr., let me, let me show the next slide, so that, I wanna show some progress.
Yeah.
Sorry.
There's one.
This is important, because I think, I want, I want everyone to see. So, we put a huge emphasis in, in our math work in 1819. We really, we, we worked on our alignment, we've been, we worked hard on getting, teaching what we're supposed to teach, okay? And we worked on those frameworks for teachers to have resources. And in this summer, we've really beefed those up yet again. So, this is the state averages, this is where we were last year, and what is significant about that we have five out of six improved over the previous year, and are at or above the state in most areas, is that this was on a testing year change, which you normally see a drop in performance. And we actually saw a gain, which is, I think, a testament to the work of our teachers. And, and Mr. Prodic, you've made a point, and rightfully so, that we need to make sure that a kid at Jarvisburg is getting the same standards that a kid at Knott's Island is getting, that Charro is getting, and so on and so forth. And so, working on that alignment piece, you got to, we got to see that movement. That's what that data says, that, that work yielded. So we, we worked on that standards piece. And then it also gives us targets as we move forward. But you can see some seven-point jump, an eight-point jump, a 14-point jump, a five, hold steady, and a small bump, but this is exceptional work, and we need to keep it there with third.
Well, and in looking at where the state average is, we did really well, when we compare ourselves to math. Very good.
Hats off to all.
And that's, and you can see the change with the, and so we, we put the emphasis, so it's.
So, I, I'm not saying that you haven't had improvement in what you did. I was talking about doing some additional things to possibly see a bigger improvement. So I don't want to be misunderstood. I don't want you to think, hey, I'm saying, hey, what you're doing is not good. What I'm saying is, it might have a more rippled effect if there was a little additional information going home with the parents. That's all I'm saying.
I agree. I like what Dr. Radke said, and we can, with the support of Diane and the math role. You know, those are things that I would like our parents to be able to go right to the, to their school's webpage and say, there's resources in 3rd grade. Now, it may not immediately match up, because we've, we've been building this, and it, it just takes time. We're not changing course in midstream, we're staying with it, but it's, these are, it, it takes, it doesn't just happen overnight. So we wanna make sure the resources that we're providing are the right resources, and that our teachers are teaching the right lessons, not random pieces. So we, we really vet what goes on there. And so I think Dr. Radke had a great point, and we can start with some of, our middle schools really strong on the Google Classroom, and our elementary people, with their Chromebooks that they're gonna receive, and the support that they're getting, I think we'll be seeing more of this over time. So, I heard you say you'd like to see more resources for parents. But I, I'd like to see a perfect link, at least in the cluster that they're teaching. I don't know that we can get a perfect day-to-day match. I think that's.
How many, how many minutes a day of math do the kids get?
Minimum is 60.
Minimum 60?
Most are more.
So, okay. The one, my point to that is, I hate to digress and go back to when I was superintendent, but I mandated 90 minutes a day of math and language arts. That way the kids were allowed to have more guided practice with worksheets, and Mr. Prodic's talking about, and that, while they were there at school, and you wouldn't have to send them home.
So that 60 minutes does not include their DreamBox time, so that's additional to that time. So there is, I don't think I have any that are at 60. They're all above, but the requirement is at least 60.
That's the state requirement. I do remember what Dr. Boudley's saying, 90 minutes. And really, honestly, I would, I hate to say I wanna do away with homework, but I don't want them doing a whole, I, I just like what he's saying.
I'd like it with the teacher at school. Because the data's out there to prove.
Reading, absolutely.
Reading every night, yeah. I'd, I'd love for us not to have math homework sent home.
Well, I, I'm just gonna say this, that yes, it appears that there are improvements. However, I'm not thrilled with anything in the 60s or 50s, and you got one of them that looks to me like it's still below the state average. And I'm not comfortable with being at the average. So I just wanna make that point clear, that I think we can aspire to do much better than that. And I think repetition, particularly in math, and having people having resources is fundamental. And that's what I believe.
Obviously.
But, you know, I'm just a walk-through, educated guy, of course, and for you, I probably don't know a thing about math.
Obviously, root for improvement, but we do appreciate the strides being made. And hats off to the students.
I understand that. All I'm saying is, I, I, let me just ask this. Are we putting this slide as, as part of this presentation, so when people watch it, they understand what you're talking about when you refer to state averages? Are they seeing this during this broadcast? Because those numbers speak volumes to what's going on. And I'm not saying you haven't implemented a plan and it hasn't shown some movement. But nobody, unless they come up with something that I can wrap my brain around, isn't gonna change my mind on, on thinking that having resources available at a young age for parents and guardians to assist with learning, to form a solid foundation, is a bad idea.
I just know, just talking, you know, with, with my daughter and my son and their children, they're constantly online with math resources at their level. There's so many different programs out there for, to reinforce your learning. And I think at some point, we can, we can say, you know, it's, it's up to the teacher to, to teach, but I think also, at, at home too, that reinforcement. And, and it's out there. It's out there. And I know, you know, Mr. Prodic, you know, you'd rather not go online and have to look anything up, but that's the wave of the future. I mean, we're there. That's what they do now. You know, even, even my grandson in kindergarten, he's doing math online and You know, even, even my grandson in kindergarten, he's doing math online. And my granddaughter in third grade, she's constantly learning.
And when you don't know something, the kids will say, "Let's go to the..."
Let's go, they know more than I do. I don't know if that's a bad thing.
Yeah, going back to what Ms. Craft said, that, that's really where the, the companies have gone. They've gone away from the, the print media and they've gone a lot more online. But, piggybacking on what Dr. Radke said, our job now as educators is to provide a listing for parents on where they can find it, so it's not just a massive search. It can be either a, a link on a website, or it can be a link, you know, inside of the, the Google Classroom from a particular teacher and say, "Here's something that's gonna help your child with geometric shapes," or here's something, and then they don't have to go find it. They just click on it and it opens up right on their computer. And if they don't have a computer, then we can send it, we can copy it at school on, on a, a smaller basis and send it home to those that need it.
Yeah, the, the, the students that don't have the resources, we have to get the message out there to them that they need to let their teachers know that. And that there needs to be printed material that they can take home for the guide, for their homework. And we can make that available. I can't imagine a teacher not making...
Oh, there's not, yeah.
Yeah.
The one would.
They would do that.
Well, and we also have, we have a limited number of, I believe they're still here, a limited number of hotspots that we've let students sign out, like you would sign out a library, where they take the hotspot home and so then we give them access to the internet too.
Well, I remember having those textbooks and feeling, you know, being the one that helped to choose it and then feeling terrible because you used them so little.
Right.
Because they just didn't cover North Carolina curriculum.
They're changing all the time.
They're written for Texas, Florida.
They're written for Texas, Florida, California.
So, there is a small movement going on with some of our, with McLemberg and WIC possibly, but they're really talking in the Math One, Math Two, Math Three arena, with getting books at the high school level. So, for the larger district purchases, if they go in, then there, then there's some momentum behind it. But that's nothing in the K eight world.
I wasn't talking about kids at the middle school that already have Chromebooks. And I wasn't talking about kids at the high school, that, you know, those kids are now past where those numbers were in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, okay? And I was talking about the kids that we're trying to get at higher numbers and lower grades. I wasn't trying to exclude anyone, but particularly, I wanna, you don't understand. I got a third grader. He didn't come home and have a Chromebook, and he didn't come home with assignments that he's supposed to do on his computer. That doesn't happen right now. So, what he comes home with is a piece of paper. It's got some questions on it. It's got no information to understand. That's what I'm saying. And that's the problem. And unless you wanna do something different, I don't suspect that you're gonna see major jumps in those scores. And I would have to ask, how did we end up with those lower scores in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen? That barely moved to somewhere further down in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, because those are the times when they didn't have any workloads, even in class.
They, they didn't last year either.
I know. So, what I'm getting at is...
So, my point with this slide was that by aligning our work across the county, by talking the same language and putting an emphasis there, we saw movement and we saw steadiness of our, we, we saw things steady. And, and, and we didn't have people all over the place, where one building is super duper, and we have some that are better than others. But this was just a visual to show that we're heading in the right direction and that we are, by emphasizing common language standards and teaching what we're supposed to teach, we saw some nice movement.
Well, I applaud you for making sure that your kids at one elementary school are learning something different than the other elementary school.
That's your first step.
You know, I applaud you for that. And I applaud you for moving in the correct direction. I was just trying to say, hey, you got these nice sets of tools, but if you had this in your arsenal and this in your arsenal, imagine what else you could have.
We'll keep adding, and, and that's the openness. We didn't add anything until we said, these are things that are gonna help us get better. So, instead of just throwing things and hoping it works, we're trying to be very strategic in our approach and pick what is gonna benefit our kids and our staff the most, rather than just to purchase something quickly and then not use it correctly. So, I, and so there is, instead of being on a sprint, that's why we added the iReady books and Free Five, and then the Dream, Dream Boxes at K five. I know that is, and we'll see how that works going on. We're not, I, I, we need, we need some time. I signed, we signed a one-year contract, not, we didn't sign for three. I wanna see how this rolls and then go from there.
I did wanna say also, I heard lots of good things about the district, I don't even know what it was called, but Ms. Hodges got it together with people coming in from wherever. I heard lots of good things about that, so I don't know if I've ever been done anything like that in Currituck, but it's great. Hats off to Ms. Hodges and all those who helped her.
We've been working hard at building our, our teacher leaders and, and building, so it doesn't rest in one person's hand. And so that we have thirty-plus math people working in, in the math arena, teachers leading the professional development, not people from the, not Kristi, not, but our teachers are doing the leading. We're providing the support behind and they're doing the leading. Language Arts, we're gonna do the same. We have a new state test at the end of this year. We've largely been pretty steady Eddie in, in ELA world. And so, at the, at the end of eighteen nineteen, we got together and we had a language arts group convened, and we started working on pacing guides, and we wrote the first and second nine weeks. And what's exciting about that is, again, common language. So, the language we're using in kindergarten, some of those same words are being used in sixth grade. They're certainly being used in first and second. So, we're building vocabulary, so we're not starting over every year. And so, as a kid goes through, they, they build. We also put a writing emphasis, so that's a, a huge step for us. We are requiring writing to occur in, in the K eight world, that we're asking writing occur every day. We've been flat on our ELA scores. We're, we've just been right here. So, let's try, we're gonna emphasize our writing. That's a big part of any test. It's a big part of life. And so, we emphasize that. We pulled in an ELA leadership team. They were selected based on their high performance repeatedly year after year. And we had some pretty strong personalities in that room. We brought them together and they really worked hard for three days, putting things together. And we, and we had a reading academy as well. Brought our people together and really talked and worked through things and provided some great PD for our teachers.
We did place a big emphasis on writing several years back, and we would get together and use rubrics to score.
When it was tested.
A reading test, a writing test.
But we did it with all grades.
When it was tested.
It was tested in fourth grade.
And once it couldn't be tested, it went away.
But I think it had a benefit besides that.
It has a huge benefit.
It is.
It's a huge benefit. And Renee's not here to speak to it, but we started off our work with her talking about our ACT scores and how the writing piece of that is clearly a component to us improving and doing well. So, year two, we're real excited. We developed our K pacing guides. We just, in this room, over the last three days, we had leaders from across the county. And if you had visited, you would've seen some, some outstanding work. And they, they put together the third and fourth nine-week pacing guides here and based on, and we're already working on revision. So, at the end of the year, we're going to bring this group back together and we're gonna revise and tweak again and, and get it, get it, get it a little bit better and making the changes we need to make. And we're using Lucy Colkin's writing workshop materials. We purchased at least one set for every building for the teachers to use. Our larger elementary's got two. I wanted our buildings to have some skin in the game. I wanted them to want, instead of just here's materials, I wanted them to say, to look at and go, this is something we really want. So, our buildings are now purchasing extra sets for their teachers. Of course, Mr. Colkin's got a full set for every one of his teachers. So, Chromebooks, again, support our teachers, and that, that's gonna be huge. They can't wait to get their hands on them. District-wide PD, we started off, I think, Jan, you just mentioned that. We did it on the twenty-fifth with our English Language Arts. We're gonna continue to work on that throughout the year. And then we have a, a national speaker, Dr. Dick, he's coming in on the twenty-third. And it's gonna be his show all day, and it's an ELA emphasis, and he's gonna talk a lot about equity in education. He's gonna talk about common language and the importance of us all being on the same page to move our kids where they need to be.
Is that October?
Twenty-third.
I wanna make a comment about the, the membership on the ELA leadership team. Sometimes when you put work groups together, the works are, the workers are grinding it out when, like, Dr. Lutz is in the room and, and rotating, or Christie's there leading, leading all the activities. This group is, is broken up into some smaller work groups. And I went in and saw one of the groups at one of the buildings the other day. Dr. Lutz, Christie, nowhere around. And these teachers were, were self-motivated and they were going at it. They were giving me short answers so that I would get out of the room and quit interrupting them so they could get back to it. You know, and they really wanted to get the work done. And so, it was pretty impressive to see, because sometimes when they go in those rooms, it, it becomes a little bit more of a relaxed, you know, working atmosphere if you're, if you're not, you know, at the district site and have the district, you know, leadership watching over your work. And these people wanted to get this work done the right way themselves. And so, you could definitely feel that when you saw it working.
Well, I think that when you see ground up, you see people that are invested in it, they're gonna do a good job. When it's mandated from the top down, not so much.
A lot of buy-in and momentum, and our teachers expressed numerous times how appreciative they are to have a stake in this and to be involved in the process rather than, rather than just having it handed to them. This just shows, it's just an outline of what we're doing this year. Really covered that on, on the previous, previous slide. But we're, we're doing things with the plan. The math component, we were certainly not aligned across schools, across grade levels. Math, as you teach, is it ELA-moving ELA? The, the, the teachers have to change their daily instruction. It's a little bit different. So, our, our hope is, right, it used to work, hope, but our, our plan is, is that by implementing the writing and, and you start to use this common language, that we start seeing movement in English Language Arts as well. It's a finer tune. The, the math one, it moves a little quicker. That's teach what you're supposed to teach, when you're supposed to teach it, at the grade level. Language Arts, it's, it's more nuanced. But we, our, we have the right people writing it, writing the pacing guides, doing the work. So, we feel pretty good about that. This was our, our team.
Who's replacing Christie Ryan?
We kept her on today.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And she started part of the process initially, and we just kept rolling with her. She was an excellent kindergarten.
Good.
Teacher, and we, she was here and really enjoyed it. We off her feet too. They, they had great work sitting right there. Questions?
You're talking about the, the pacing guides.
Yes.
I, how do we compare them all as far as their scores?
To Wake County?
Yeah.
We're, we're comparable when we average out the whole district. It's not comparable, because we have ten schools and they have like.
Right.
A hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty. But what we do is we go through, just like we've mentioned, like a high school grade point average. And so, we take all a hundred and thirty of their schools and we average them together, this many As, this many Bs, and come up with a grade point average. And we do the same thing with our ten. And take a year, and it's a tenth of a, of a grade point average number. So, if we would be two point five or two point six, they might be two point four or two point seven. You know, we're, we're, we're right there, you know, with, with them and what they're accomplishing in, in there. And we're always, we always seem to be ahead of Charlotte Mac. We always seem to be ahead of a lot of the, the bigger areas. But Wake County, I think, is the highest performing bigger area, you know, in, in the state.
I know. I have a relative who used to teach there, and she showed me how, I mean, they haven't laid out for them just about every minute what you're teaching. The creativity for teaching is not evident there. But no matter what the objective was, they, it was right there. You're teaching this on September first. Here's three, here's three worksheets or whatever. Right there.
Yeah, but what happens if those five kids or ten kids didn't get what you taught September twenty-third? Then September twenty-fourth, you're gonna go on with what it said. You know that.
No, she said her principal was flexible and allowed, her principal was.
Yeah, but that is...
But it, I, I can see the benefit of that for a new teacher coming in, having some resources at their fingertips and not having to spend hours.
That's what those frameworks are.
Yeah.
So, the frameworks and the pace, this is not the pacing guide that we had before. This is, we have live links in the pacing guide. We have the resources, and this team today was vetting that. You couldn't just put it on there unless it's been used. And so, exactly what you're talking about is a, absolute has been an issue. You have people that change grade levels or came in brand new.
And start all over.
They did, they had to start, and they didn't know where necessarily to start. So, if you are now in a smaller building and have to switch grades, and you have to go from third to fourth grade, you can now go to our framework and say, here's your pacing, here's your resources, here's your documents, and we're gonna continue to beef that up and need to add more good pieces in and not just let that piece. Now, the pace is gonna be the same, but all those resources are there. You're absolutely correct. It had, it was not there in the past. I think, I'm gonna go back in, we're gonna get our teachers' Chromebooks, so when they're home, you know, elementary, they get, they work really hard. And they go home now, and they're gonna be having, it's not on there, so one more resource to help them out.
So, Christie, I know when you were demonstrating that last year, they're actually sampling lesson, lessons in those sites. Have they expanded that cache, if you will, of, of lesson plans to go across all the standards?
So, with the writing there, there is, you know, that, that means, so Lucy Colkin's writing. She has a library that comes with her teachers' college, and our teachers were trained on how to access that resource. And so, it's truly a video library. So, if a teacher is concerned about how to implement a mini lesson, they can go to that site. We showed them. It's embedded in the resources document. And they can type in how to teach a mini lesson, grade one, and they'll have a plethora of videos to choose from and get to actually see it, so, yes.
And that's really helpful, again, because new teachers, some of them are naturals, but others, they're, they're just as good as the university that produced them. And so, they need some more growth opportunities. And if they have those, those actual lessons to draw off, if they get them started, that's, that's a benefit to them.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can see landscaping contracts. Superintendent Stefanic and Matt Nolan's director of buildings around.
Thank you. Ms. Edbridge. There, there was a request to bring our, our contract that we, our contract template that we typically use for landscaping services in front of the board prior to us putting it out for, the, the term used, putting it out for bid. With this type of contract services, you're permitted to just put it out for quotes, and you don't have to have all the, the lockstep deadlines and forms and everything, and that would occur in a formal bid process. So, we can, you know, put it out for a quote. But there was a request to bring it here and see if there needs to be more specificity in the landscaping contracts before we put them out there for vendors to put their quote forward.
Is this what our legal resources recommended?
Yes, this is, this is a template that, that the legal counsel gave to us. I think the, the area is more like in the, in the one point one, you know, to possibly maybe one point three area. Talk about exactly what the contractor or vendor needs to describe to us or what we need to present to them about what our expectations are. So, if they're right, I mean, we could either, we can either vet it here, or now that you have it in front of you, you can email me things that you'd like to see included in it, and then we could create a draft, like a working draft, and then keep sending it out weekly or, or every couple of weeks and say, here's where it stands right now. Is this more of what you're looking for? And then we can like, it can be, well, it can be a group language arts project, a writing project for the Board of Education to put in there what they think needs to happen. When you get into pages two and three and paragraph fifteen and twenty and stuff like that, you're actually getting into legal type things that, you know, those types of areas, we probably aren't really qualified to, to vet. But it's more about what we're paying for and what we're giving from the vendor, how to put that out in a descriptive way so that everybody's clear about what the vendors are doing at each of our sites. And currently, if the board doesn't know, we have three contracts out for landscaping right now. right now. We have Knott's Island is a contract by itself. We have a gentleman that has been historically doing Jarvisburg and Griggs since those two schools have been down there doing Griggs of course longer than Jarvisburg, but once Jarvisburg came, he started doing that as well. And then we have another contractor that's doing the remaining seven schools and the district sites, like the annex, the old registration center, the central office complex. And in a process, like a bidding process or a quote process, we could put it out there as 13 separate sites and then have companies say per site, this is what this would cost, is what this is costing. And then you could actually put out multiple contracts or you could bundle some of them together the way they are now.
How are they putting it out there? How was it put out there?
We would put an advertisement out there, wherever, online, in newspapers, on our website.
I don't know what you normally do, I was just inquiring.
If you go through a formal bid process, they tell you exactly where you have to post it. In a quote process, you have a little more flexibility. And we would do every electronic meetings possible. If you want to put it in newspaper, do they charge down here?
Sometimes in some communities they've, yeah.
They charge for everything?
Okay.
Sometimes newspapers let schools do things, you know, without charging for ads.
The current process, if you're happy with the job that's being done, you don't necessarily have to advertise each year, you just renew it or do you put it up for bids every year?
The contract, the way that the lawyers wrote it is two years guaranteed and any subsequent year is, if you're happy with the services and they're happy with the fees, it rolls over into another year.
So you don't advertise every year?
You don't advertise.
After the third year, would you advertise?
Uh, no.
If it was extended for one year?
If it was extended for one year, it's a continual process.
That could be renewed.
It could be renewed indefinitely, one year at a time, one year at a time.
That's how the previous contract read and this one or are both in the same?
There, the reason the contracts are in your hands is because about 2000, the end of 2016 to beginning of 2017, I started scouring my file cabinets for landscaping contracts, could not find any in writing. So in order to put something in writing to cover us and help the contractors kind of a mutual agreement, I put something in writing. And that's kind of why it's so general because I said, you guys have been doing this a lot longer than I've been here, you know what you're doing. We'll talk about it, but give me your proposal as you spoke with my predecessor about it. So they said, this is all we ever said, cut, trim, spray. I said, okay, but let's have a conversation about what you do. So we had a verbal conversation. I was pleased with what they were doing. And I made a general contract for two years and said, okay, we'll revisit it in two years. So that's where we are now. We're a little bit over two years.
Because it used to be what was going on.
And back in 2016, 17, what was going on is we were advised to review all of our contracts because there was a federal law that said we had to add in a paragraph about these businesses didn't do business with Iran.
Iran investment.
Iran. And so we had to put it in. And so when we started going through, we started to find out. And again, when the district was smaller and it was a different age, there were a lot of understandings, handshake agreements, you know, with contracts. And this is one that we found out that was that way.
I'm not saying we didn't have them, but I couldn't find them. So.
So when you came up with the contract at that time, did they put in new bids at that time?
No, they actually maintained the same pricing. And in subsequent conversations, one contractor's been at the same price level for 10 years.
Wow.
One contractor's been at the same price level for 26 years. And one contractor's been at the same price level since 1998. So that's, my fear is that the working relationship that I have with these guys.
Either they were paying too much to be good work or they didn't do well. I mean, you can say.
I've seen other, just for reference, I've seen other contracts and they're relatively high. I mean, I'm saying, I'm being kind of conservative in saying that. I know one contract that I've seen is 30 acres for $75,000. I'm getting seven schools for just slightly over that. So that's my fear. We put it out for bid, we may end up financially in a hole where now if we have a problem with somebody, I just call them and say, hey, you messed up or whatever, your employees messed up. And they offer to pay for it, they offer to fix it, they offer to do it. And they do it. So I do agree that based on the fact that I've made those contracts so general, we can make them more specific without increasing the fees, just based on the conversations that I had with the guys and what I know they do.
And you can terminate, I believe I read, you can terminate them.
Within 30 days, 30 days notice. Yeah, if you're not happy, you can, 30 days notice. And these contracts were written by our lawyers at Barrington Smith. The only thing that we do is add the exhibit A portion to it so they can give us the specifics in their exhibit A. And if it's not specific enough, now I make it more specific. I say, I don't like this. Like I said in the beginning, that was the first contracts that I found that I didn't have. So I said, let's just put something together quickly for the next two years and keep rolling because I'm still getting my feet wet in this job. And they know what they do, the boundary lines, they know the property lines, they know where to cut better than I do.
Okay, so they, we do have a contract with them. Is that what you're saying?
We have contracts with all of them.
We have contracts with all.
Yeah, this, yeah. And one thing we're going to do too is line things up. What the contract actually, well, the contract right now actually expired August 1st, the contracts that we had. But it's because they were set up on the school fiscal year. Well, they don't cut according to the school fiscal year. And so when we do the new contract, we're going to do it January to November, you know, and do an actual calendar year. And so it'll actually, part of it will be out of this year's money and then part of it will be out of next year's money. So because we have guys that start mowing in March or April.
March.
And then they finish somewhere between Halloween and Thanksgiving. And so if their contract expires in July and then you have to switch mowers in the middle of the summer, it does, it's not practical. And so we would set up the next contracts. That's why it's okay for us to bid these. This could be one of those rollover years from July to July, but we could put it up in the fall when they're done mowing off of this contract and then just see if anybody has, you know, better services or better prices to offer to us and then set up a new two-year contract with the winning vendors.
Any other questions?
I'd like to have a chance to talk about it.
Okay.
Or think about it.
Okay, sure.
There's some specifics in here, you know, I think that, like you said, maybe we want to refine something.
Definitely, yeah.
And I appreciate you being forthright with all the information. I know that coming into the situation and not necessarily having somebody to point you to where all the information is or was or the previous communications, I can totally respect that situation. However, I think maybe we want to still change some of the language.
Definitely.
And based on, well, excuse me, based on what Matt says, now the board can do it two ways. You can either put the language in like 1.1 or you could create an expectation for what the contractor turns in in exhibit A.
Yeah.
You know, this is what, you know, we can do with each site for this amount of money.
I could take 1.1 and say, see addendum, and this is what we expect from you.
Right.
And the lawyer even discussing it with him said, you can tell them how tall the grass should be, but I don't think we want to say, cut the grass at four inches every week. I mean, I just, that's too specific. We can kind of meet in the middle and get a good.
I think there should be some range and say something to the effect of no more than this many times a month, but not less than this.
Yeah, we have kind of.
Indicating what's to be sprayed, what isn't.
We have kind of an agreement verbal now that everybody cuts every seven days in the pea growing season, then they cut back to 10 days in the fall and they start at 10 days in the spring. But that should be specified in writing. How often do we spray?
Yes, sir.
Do we spray too close to flower beds and new bushes? I've had that happen before. So yeah, there's more specifics that could be written.
Okay. And you want any revisions that you can think of or any of us to email those to Mr. Stefani?
Yes, it's fine. Yes, it's fine.
Yeah, I mean, the two of us.
We work it out.
Yeah, and we'll just keep sending a working document. We'll just keep sending revisions out to the board until everybody's satisfied and then at that point we'll.
And lastly, I'm not so sure, you know, I'm not speaking for everybody obviously, but I'm not all necessarily one of fuzzy, having a contract that runs out for forever until, like, I don't know. I think at a certain point, you want to put it back out for bid.
Well, and that's, that's another piece that gets, now that gets back to page like 10. At the end, when you get past all the legal stuff about background checks and all that stuff, then you get to the end and you could put specific language about that in there. Can roll over this many times before you put it out for a new quote and see what's going on in the market.
Do we have other contracts in the school system, like say for food service, that we operate on the same way? They just kind of.
These are more service contracts.
Yeah, yeah. Food service does have contracts. I can't guarantee that they're all annual contracts, but the way they're different is we're part of like a Northeast North Carolina consortium. And so we put our input into the consortium and then they do the contracts for like 25 school districts.
But like the copier contracts?
Yes.
How do we do those compared to the landscaping?
Most contracts that I deal with, and it's probably the same with the copier contract, the company is not comfortable going more than two to three years because they don't want to lose money.
Right.
So these guys have been working on the same pricing for a decade.
Right. But the copier contracts, for instance.
Yeah.
Do we, if we're happy with them, do we have the option to just roll it over without putting it out for bid?
I've never read it before.
Nobody's financed it here. I double check, I think yes. You know, what typically happens is, and I don't know what the inner workings of the business world are, but people seem to know when, you know, let's say we have Xerox, we don't, but let's say that we do, because I can't think of the other companies right now. So if you had Xerox, everybody seems to know when Xerox's three years is up. And so you start with even not putting it out for bid, you start getting emails. Hey, can we come talk to you? Hey, would you like to see what we have to offer? And then doing demos and that stuff comes out, what the actual bidding laws are for all the different departments. I don't know those right offhand, I'd have to look them up. But they're typically two or three-year contracts. And then, like Matt said, it's in their interest to put it back out there and say, this is as good as we can do. We got to, we got to bring your price up a half a percent or a percent or whatever.
I just wondered how landscaping compared to the contracts that we do.
Yeah, and you could run, I mean, again, up to the board, you could run them. It could be a flat, it's two years, it's three years, and then we're going out for new quotes every single two years or three years.
Yeah, but based on what's going on with what we've been doing for decades, we may just, we may lose big time.
I mean, we can, we can, we can do an informal process and call some people that are reputable based on my conversations with other districts in this area and see how we compare, if that's what you want to do.
Well, I'm going to say if three people been doing it and one of them for 27 years and the other two for a decade and a half, and the likelihood that all three maintained and kept doing it, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, you probably won't lose them money. All right? So that means that I'm not that scared about it. What I mean is if they, they had a rate to terminate to you. So if they were losing money, at some point in time during the course of that decade or two, I just got this funny feeling that tells me that they're, you know, three different businesses and nobody, so.
I haven't seen their ledger, so I can't say that. But they also say that they like working with us and we've always treated them.
And they're local.
And it's a steady income.
They're local.
And it generates future income because they know that he, I mean, there are contractors, I, as an electrical contractor, I bid against guys who only wired houses to keep their people busy and lost money on them because the commercial jobs made them more. So these guys, one of them is basically, it's me, my son and my granddaughter. And I don't make as much money as I did 20 years ago, but I still make a steady living and I do other contracts other places. The other one was I generate, I keep my people busy cutting your grass, do bigger jobs other places. And then when you hire me to do something else, I make the extra doing something else. Or somebody else around here sees me and I make extra doing that because they call. So there's different ways of looking at it. You're right, they're probably not losing any of that.
I'm saying even if they're using it still, and I respect that too, have been in business, you got to have something to keep your people moving forward. Well, maybe they'll give us the same price or better if there's some competition. I'm not that scared of it.
I don't have a problem calling people.
So I don't know, you know, if you want to let it go until what you said, or how we're going to revise it.
I think calling people and getting a feel for what somebody else is going to say they'll do it for is going to tell, going to tell the tale about whether they're, we were actually like paying them way too much or we were right on track.
So if we find out that he's got two people who called up and the price is real high, we're not going to put it out for bid because we want to keep these people.
No, that's not the case.
I know.
We, if there's someone better out there, I'd be glad to have them.
It's so odd though that just in other conversations, I've had landscaping contracts come up with people in other arenas, not in education. And the contracts I've heard about, there's a lot, lot less acreage, you know, being maintained.
A lot more money.
A lot more money. And so, you know, our cost right now, I don't know who's making money and who's not making money, but who's not spending a lot of money is us.
It's us.
Well, can we at least agree that maybe there should have been some contracts that he could have found? And then maybe the language could be refined? Could we at least agree?
Oh, no, I have refined the contract. We want to refine the contract.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I don't even have a problem putting it out there to see what's out there. Yeah, we can go see what's out there, that's not a problem. But he's saying on top of that, we can call other districts and see what they're.
Who they do, how they do things and who they recommend.
And the only one that's different around here that we saw from research that the newspaper did about sports fields is that Elizabeth City, they have a big enough maintenance department that they do their own, that they, and other people.
Yeah, which is the way it was in Chesapeake when I was there, when I was in my twenties. But you have, in that aspect, you maintain a fleet of tractors, lawn mowers, weed eaters, and probably 15 people on staff at all times. So we would definitely eat that one.
Well, and we were, I was talking about that with, well, right, well, we pay right now, between $120 and $130,000 for all of our sites, for the whole cutting season. If we would take that on ourselves and we would take the same three people, you know, the three people would cost us that much money. So that's no tractors, no equipment, no gas, no, you know, insurance on the equipment, no insurance on the people.
Yeah, like the same could be said, but then you have three people, you have them throughout the whole week, every week, and then might possibly could do other services there. So that, you know. And then you could talk about the initial investment on the equipment and the life expectancy of this and that. So I mean, that's not a simple.
Based on what I've seen, that I, we, I think we would need double that, three to six, and keep them busy all week long on 10 schools with all the acres that we have. And the ditch banks and the septic fields and the chiller fields and all that stuff, it's just, it's a big undertaking.
So we can put, like, maybe Matt and I can work on a starting point for more specific language. We'll kick it out and then you guys can be the editors of the new language and get it to where we want it. And then we can start contacting the vendors and see what we come up with.
Good, sounds good. Okay.
And just, if I might make a suggestion, the board has to travel to the courthouse for the next meeting at 4:30.
Yeah.
We can maybe talk about the next item during board superintendent comments at the end of the regular meeting if you want to, and then we'll be on time for the regular meeting.
All right.
That one's more like informational.
Want to close the work session?
A second. I'll make a motion.
Okay. All in favor? Work session is adjourned.